Okay, um, now we're going to move on to item, uh, B.
Air?
I'm sorry, did I?
One point of order. I believe we had two resolutions to approve, and I, I, I thought the clerk asked us to vote on each.
I apologize. Uh, is that correct, Melissa?
It's you. I was trying to cut in, but I didn't want to interrupt Supervisor Pine, so I, we do need a vote for the second resolution, which is authorizing the display of the LGBTQ Pride Flag at a designated San Bruno City facility, which we now know is the City Hall Flagpole, to commemorate the L-
Yeah, LGBT.
LGBTQ Pride Month.
Yes, and if we, and if we find a more festivus- festivity, uh, in next year, we can work on that and, and plan it. Um, okay, so, and City Attorney wants to, so may I please have action on the number, uh, second item that was just, uh, talked to by Melissa?
So, through the chair?
Yes.
So, motion to approve the resolution authorizing the city to display the LGBTQ Pride Flag through the duration of the month of June.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you for, uh, getting to make sure we're on track, and now we're gonna go into item B.
Item six B, provide additional direction regarding placing a cannabis initiative measure on the November 2020 ballot and adopt a resolution appropriating funds from the general fund balance for selected consulting services.
Uh, Mr.'s, uh, City Attorney, Mr. Zeparano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Uh, we're just gonna take a moment for the slideshow to come up on the screen, so please just give us a, a minute. Still working on it, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. Um, just another couple minutes and we should have it up.
Okay.
We do see it.
Do we need a few-minute break, or are we okay to go?
Well, that, that's a good question. Why don't you give us one, one more try, and, uh, we'll see if we can bring it up. We're just trying to get it into slideshow format so we can, uh, display it properly. And there seems to be some problem with that.
Mark, would you like me to step in here?
Uh, well, why don't we not have three people doing the same thing at the same time? So, let's, let's take it one at a time. I know, um, our, our staff here is trying to work on it.
Okay. I think Mark just wants to make this conversation last as long.
(laughing) That's, that's funny.
Would you guys like a few minutes for us to take a break?
Yeah, I, I think that would be good. Why don't we just take a couple of minute breaks so that we can, uh, figure out, uh, what, what to do? Thank you very much.
Council, please don't log out. Just, uh, be back in five or so?
Thank you for your help with that. I really appreciate it.
And I see Michael's back. I'll wait for my colleagues to turn, um, their cameras on. Marty's there. Michael. Just wanna make sure we check in with, uh, Linda and Laura. Uh, Linda's in, okay? And Laura. So, it sounds like we have everybody here. We're all back and staff says they're ready, so why don't we go ahead, and, uh, Melissa, if you can, um, tell Mary we're ready?
We are ready to go.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're gonna reconvene, uh, the June 9th, 2020 San Bruno City Council meeting. We've already, uh, read out, but we are on conduct of business, item B. Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you very much. Sorry for the delay. So, uh, we have a brief agenda here. We're going to review the direction that was provided at the last two study sessions by the City Council. Uh, take a look at some of the City Council's options at this time. Request that the Council provide additional direction to staff, and then look at next steps. So, this is a brief summary of the prior study sessions. We just have a couple of slides on this. So, on June 2nd, the City Council received a comprehensive staff report, and you reviewed state, federal, and local laws, uh, reviewed the status of commercial cannabis activities in all of the San Mateo County jurisdictions. And what we found was, out of those jurisdictions, uh, there were seventeen of them in which cannabis is either prohibited or, um, the only thing that's permitted is delivery. And then there were eight, uh, cities and jurisdictions in which various activities were allowed, uh, taxed to a certain degree, but out of those eight jurisdictions, we found that only one, uh, Pacifica, had operating dispensaries which produce significant tax revenue, mainly because those were legacy businesses. So, we also discussed on June 2nd why that was, and the barriers to entry into the new markets, and why the other cities that, uh, do allow dispensaries have not actually seen any dispensaries open in their jurisdictions. On June 2nd, we also discussed ballot measure options, which included to put a tax only on, uh, tax in a regulatory measure or only a regulatory measure. We also talked about obtaining expert assistance for polling, elections, economic analysis, SEQA mailers, and so on, and the staff report that you, uh, had at that time indicated that the cost of that would vary depending upon, uh, what you selected, not only in terms of the type of measure, but also in terms of the, the consultant options. And the cost could be up to $100,000, but it also could be less depending upon the variety of measures that the City Council wished us to employ. And then finally, on, on June 2nd, there was some direction provided. There was no majority support to place a regulatory ballot measure, um, on the ballot for November 2020. And then the second thing is, uh, there, there, despite lacking four affirmative votes, which would ultimately be necessary, to place a tax measure on the ballot, it was somewhat unclear to staff as to whether to continue work on a tax-only measure despite that. So, on June 4th, the City Council held a strategic priority study session for fiscal year 2020, 2021, and there was further discussion at that meeting, and a request to return to this meeting for additional direction. So, let's take a look, uh, just briefly at what the options are for, uh, the City Council. Uh, we can have a tax-only measure that requires a majority three-fifths to direct staff, supermajority to put it on the ballot, and the voters have to implement that. If you want a tax and a regulatory measure, uh, it's the same thing, a majority to tell us to keep working on it, a supermajority to put a tax on the ballot, and of course, the voters do have to approve a tax, but the voters or the City Council, uh, can approve regulatory measures. And that's the same for the third item in the left-hand column, a regulatory measure only. And of course, another option is to defer action at this time. So, the additional direction we're looking for this evening is, first of all, should staff continue working on a tax measure? And second of all, if so, provide direction regarding what level of tax would be appropriate. And you've seen this slide before. It was presented at the, uh, June 2nd study session. You could, uh, direct staff to pick a variety of, of tax rates, uh, without any particular information except what other cities have done, or you could retain experts to evaluate what's the appropriate level for each activity. And then the other direction that staff would be looking for is, should the city provide, uh, information to the community about the tax measure? If so, uh, in what form? Public meetings, staff presentations, or mailers? Um, and then two other things important to consider, uh, one of them, the effect of the placement of a potential cannabis measure on the ballot at the same time as the City Council is also considering placing a TOT measure on the ballot. And then also consider the fact that if a cannabis measure is placed on the ballot, the voters would be asked to approve a tax for activities that aren't yet permitted. You've also seen this slide before. This is a, an estimate of the costs for the various activities that you could direct staff to retain consultants for. There's a polling cost, uh, would be about $30,000, could be a little bit more if, for election consulting, and particularly on that question of, uh, placing the, the TOT measure at the same time as a, a cannabis measure. Uh, you do have a proposal in the packet from the second for comprehensive, uh, services for the measure, including economic analysis, measure development at the ballot, uh, and public meetings, about $30,000. You would only need SEQA and GIS services if you, uh, wanted to adopt or place a regulatory measure on the ballot. And then there's costs for informational mailers, about $8,000 per, and election costs about $7,000 to $11,000. And then you saw the estimate of staff time previously, from fifty to about 150 hours depending on the direction that the City Council gives us. So, in summary, we have the timeline, uh, which is that, as you know, the ballot measure and all associated materials have to get to the county by August 8th. We have about six weeks to perform all of the necessary work before the second July City Council meeting. And so, if there is going to be direction to staff and consultants, uh, we should, we should start that work immediately. So, the next steps to close are, uh, whether to place a tax measure on the ballot or not, and then if so, whether to retain consultants, and if so, uh, what work for them to perform and what the source of funds is. So, that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mark. Sorry, I was on mute. Uh, what I'd like to do is turn to, uh, the public, 'cause I know, uh, the hour, 9:20. So, I wanted to make sure anybody who would want to offer, uh, anything on this topic could have that ability, and if they needed to depart, of course, could or remain. So, I'm gonna turn it over to the City Clerk and allow her to, uh, begin to call, um, through the names, please.
I'm going to stop the sharing of the screen so I can bring up the timer.
Thank you.
And, uh, first person is Terri Francis. Terri, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Hi, Councilmembers. I thank you for taking my hand again. And, um, I, I'm, I'm very strong about putting this, uh, this vote on the ballot, to put this, uh, agenda on the, on a ballot, because we are in, we are the mainstream to the airport. And even though I am not a cannabis user, I do use the oils, and my, I have an aunt that's 91 years old, and she's always in a lot of pain. And we have to go to the city to, uh, purchase the oil for her and take it all the way to San Jose. And I know a, a few of my friends that do indulge in smoking cannabis, they go all the way to the city just to buy it. And I'm thinking, since we have the bus terminal, the bar terminal, train terminal, and the airport right here in San Bruno, that this would be a very good, um, place to put a cannabis store, so that, you know, we can bring up some kind of, of, um, what do you call it, revenue for, for San Bruno. And that's, that's what I wanted to put in my two cents. (laughing)
Thank you, Terri.
So, I would suggest yes, to put it on the ballot, and I would definitely vote yes on the ballot, and so would my husband. And so would the, I think, majority of San Bruno, because I live in downtown San Bruno, and you would be surprised the amount of drug dealing I see go on, going on on the corners. And I would live down the street from Newell's, so I see a lot of it.
Thank you, Terri.
You're welcome. Have, thank you for taking my call.
Absolutely, of course.
Okay, uh, next is Tom Hamilton.
Oh, hold on, I'm here.
Hi, Tom, can you hear us?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, it was unfortunate that the staff report made such heavy reference to the program in South San Francisco. It should be made clear that South City does not currently have any cannabis dispensaries. They have delivery services based there, and as described in detail in the staff report we heard last week, it's difficult, if not impossible, for cities to regulate and collect from delivery businesses. And this is why South City's revenue is so low from cannabis, and using them for revenue comparison is a misdirection. It should however be noted that South City has its own large areas of their city to allow cannabis businesses, so it is only a matter of time before dispensaries begin to open, making it even more imperative for San Bruno tag now. Councilmember Davis said last week that she might support this proposal, but just not at this time. She has concerns about the work needed to put this on the ballot, overloading our city staff, but these concerns were debunked by the city manager on the record in the meeting last week. We have an $8 million budget shortfall that we'll be dealing with for years to come, and an opportunity here to attract a recession-proof, heavily-regulated business to our city, an opportunity that won't come up again for two more years. Now is exactly the time to move forward with a tax-plus-regulatory ballot measure. Councilmember Salazar's arguments last week, actually, have contradicted themselves. He started by saying there's no guarantee anyone has any interest in opening a dispensary in San Bruno, despite just minutes before having heard from two successful operators of cannabis dispensaries expressing interest in doing exactly that. And then he ended his argument by saying that all of the people who want to open dispensaries might work to influence the election, but which isn't. Both of those things can't be true. He also characterized putting this decision to the voters as a cop-out, to prevent the Council from having to take a stand. And since we all know that all taxes must be approved by the voters, we have to wonder if Councilmember Salazar is either comically unaware of the process, or much more likely is grasping at straws to come up with reasons to vote no, because he's personally against cannabis and is trying to be our dad instead of our council member. If you're against cannabis, vote no on the ballot measure. And if it does pass, then don't patronize the dispenser. I don't plan to. I don't use cannabis. But I do see the benefit it brings to several of my neighbors in San Bruno who suffer from chronic illness. And despite the misleading sections of the staff report, I also see the massive economic benefit it will bring that our city desperately needs. Lastly, please consider that including a regulatory measure would settle the question of what the citizens want, something like, should San Bruno allow the operation of retail cannabis businesses, the location and number of which to be regulated by City Council through a public process? This leaves the city with options, and they, and you guys can make a plan even after the election. Either way, I cannot urge you strongly enough, let the people vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
One moment. The next person is Terri Chavez. Just one moment, Terri, while we bring you in. Hey, Terri, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for allowing me an opportunity to speak. I want to mention how important the right to vote is. The County Assessor's website indicates that San Bruno had 20,000, I'm sorry, 23,194 registered voters as of, as of November 2019. A little less than 8,000 voters voted on the ballot measure for Measure G, the half-cent sales tax. Of the voters that did cast a vote, they approved this with 61.6% voting yes. However, almost 3,000 voters did cast a no vote. As a result, the 61% voter approval, we now have the additional half-a-cent sales tax implemented in San Bruno. I voted yes on that, on this measure, because I believed that we needed the additional revenue in San Bruno. Each of the 3,000 voters that voted no would have their own reasons to have voted no. The opportunity to cast a vote is the cornerstone of democracy in our country. As an elected official on the school board, I took an oath to uphold the United States Constitution and the California Constitution, as did each council city, as in each city council member. Does San Bruno need marijuana dispensaries? I might not, I might not agree that we do. I might be opposed to it. However, it is a fundamental, fundamental right of democracy to allow the voters to cast their votes in November 2020 and make this decision. Lastly, I want to end with a quote from Franklin Delano Roosevelt. "Let us never forget that government is ourselves and not an alien power over us. The ultimate rulers of a democracy are not a president and senators and congressmen and government officials, but the voters of this country." Thank you.
Thank you, Terri.
Uh, next is Holly S. Just one moment while I bring you in. Hi, Holly, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Awesome. My name is Holly Smalley. I'm the, uh, compliance director for Lit. It's a medical and recreational adult-use cannabis, uh, business in Pacifica. And I'm also the vice president of the San Mateo County Cannabis Association, and I'm also super honored to be a part of our local youth prevention board. Uh, my background is in education, so youth prevention is something that's always been really important to me. And I wanted to participate tonight, um, as a representative for San Mateo County Cannabis Association. We've been watching our sister cities and have an interest in advocating for safe cannabis access for, um, other communities. You know, working really closely, or we worked really closely with our city planning commission, our police department, our city council members, and with youth prevention and creating our local ordinance. And, um, I'm here tonight just to applaud you for considering a vote for the San Bruno community and allowing the community to decide whether cannabis would be, have a positive impact on the community. Offering safe access and an opportunity for increased revenue for the city is, um, has such value, and especially right now. Um, I also wanted to share a little bit about our store and what we do, and, and how we hope we're having a positive impact on the community. Uh, we offer locked boxes at cost to our guests for, um, safety purposes, for pets, for youth, for children. Um, we also offer, and a lot of, and a lot of cannabis businesses do this. I mean, most of these businesses are, are run by very intelligent, socially aware, environmentally aware people who really care about our community. We organize beach cleanups. We clean our street every single day. We know all of our neighbors, and we've only had positive interactions with our community so far, and we hope to continue to do that. Um, you know, a lot of concerns, I think, our city had that you might have as well, are probably, you know, just similar common, um, fears. But I also wanted to talk a little bit about what those might be. Um, most research shows that, um, that crime decreases in neighborhoods when cannabis dispensaries open, and that's because of the comprehensive security systems required by state and local communities. Um, also, property values increase because crime goes down, and neighboring businesses near cannabis dispensaries, um, had access to additional revenue. You know, people come into your store to buy cannabis, and they ask, where can I get lunch? Where can I get a coffee? Where should I get my hair done? My nails done? Where can I take a surf lesson? You know, so people come into the city to, um, as tourists, you know, from the airport. You guys are closer to the airport than we are. But right now, we get calls all the time from people who just landed from out of the country or out of state, wondering what do they need to do to come inside our store? What are the requirements? And it's just been a really, really positive experience, um, for, I think, our business neighbors, our, our, you know, residential neighbors.
Holly, if you, you've got, no, everybody gets three minutes, and if you could wind it up, please?
Sure. So, I just wanted to share a little bit about the positives, and I, again, applaud you for considering allowing your community to vote on it, and I hope it's something that you guys will vote yes on and give your community the chance to, to have safe, safe access. I think it's important that we get to choose what we put in our bodies. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Holly. And just as a reminder, folks, uh, we've done three minutes. I'm showing, after Holly, one, two, three, four, five, six more speakers, last one being Paul. So, if anybody else plans to speak, uh, please, uh, raise your hand now so that we have it, uh, going. Thank you very much.
Next is Russell Steins. Just one moment while we bring him in. Russell, I'm having trouble unmuting you. Do you have the ability to unmute? Okay, I think we lost Russell there. I'm not sure what happened. Next would be Josh Goldberg.
Hi.
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Go ahead, please. You can go ahead and start. Okay, hi, uh, uh, at what everyone else ahead of me said, I, I don't have much more to add than what they already, uh, said pretty well. Uh, let us vote on this. We're citizens here. We ask you to administer our government, uh, not to administer our morality. Thanks.
Thank you, Josh.
Okay, and next is Alexander Melendez. Just one moment, Alex, while I bring you in. Hi, Alex.
Hi, hello, San Bruno, um, City Council for the third time, the third time tonight. Um, I'm also in favor of placing, uh, this, um, uh, a potential cannabis, um, measure on the ballot. Uh, I think it's, it's one of the most heavily-regulated, um, uh, uh, industries out there. Apologies, the hour is very late. Um, and it's, uh, it would be up to the voters. The voters would get to choose and decide whether this is something that they want in their community. Um, it would be something that I would be in favor of voting for, and I hope that you would leave it up to the citizens to decide, um, whether or not this is something we want, um, in our city. Um, and I think the other , uh, commenters would probably have more info to say. Have a good night.
Thank you, Alex.
Next is Riley Gibbons. Just one moment while we bring you in. Hi, Riley, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Whenever you're ready.
All right, well, thank you for allowing me to speak. Um, one, I just want to start off with tipping my hat to what Ariana Bollock did at the park yesterday. And I would like to point out how much the Council harps on young leaders. As a young leader like myself, and how you guys say we are the future, people like us who are very, um, involved with the marijuana industry, we know how important it is to be open to the community. And to hold us back because of biased opinions is truly unfair, and it'll eventually just come around and bite you. Um, to point out some things that you guys mentioned earlier, um, the South San Francisco revenue being less than 100 grand, and that was within a year. If it costs less than 100 grand just to get this thing rolling, you would at least see us outperforming South City and making your money back to a minimum. And you could imagine if we opened at least two shops, you know, it could be far greater than that. Another thing I, uh, heard you guys say was a senior center mentioned that, um, it took only one day to pass outdoor seating, which is far riskier, I believe, with lives of people than, you know, 100 grand. And, um, you guys were, seemed very proud that it only took one day. You also mentioned, we saved weeks of meetings, but we've been doing this for years. So, I truly don't see what the problem is, um, with certain people here. And another thing you guys quoted was what helps buy more as a business, and like, these businesses that are in a recession right now because of the COVID. Uh, as you can tell, marijuana shops are, uh, are essential. So, if we had one or two in San Bruno, you would see a fast increase in tax revenue, and it would help everything. Yeah, and then, I feel like at this point, the people, the majority of people, and you guys know it, are pro clubs. And I feel like strongly that the people kind of have the Council cornered at this point, and there's nothing else you can really say. And people are starting to get impatient with certain council members. And I feel, just give us what the people want. If it doesn't work, the business owners are gonna be the one at loss. You guys took a risk, that's great. So, it will pay off, but I think at this point, you guys just gotta let the people do what they need to do at this, like, at this time. Like Tom mentioned, if we're gonna take any action, it's now. There's no point waiting two years. We could have our sister cities open up before us and take our competition away. So, uh, with that being said, I feel, you know, really consider it, because this isn't gonna end. Uh, people are gonna fight until we get it. So, it's either, you know, give people what we want, or, you know, just face the fire at that point. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, please.
Next is Chris Perez. One moment. Chris, can you hear us?
I can, thank you. I, I just wanted to, um, also support the, the ballot measure to give the, the- to give the, the community a chance to vote on this. And also, really, my reason for that would be to capture some of these lost revenues. I don't think people are, um, in San Bruno are not buying cannabis. I believe they're buying it at other locations. Um, we have the 101 corridor that, to my knowledge, has no dispensaries on it. Um, it would be a great, um, a great thing for the city to embrace right now. We're not creating a new revenue stream, but we're capturing, uh, revenue that's leaking. So, um, I think that's important, and I hope you guys will put it on the ballot.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, next is Paul Lipinski. Hi Paul, can you hear us?
Yep.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay, uh, in response to that lady that owned the other dispensary, if, if all she said was true, then every city in the state would have millions of dispensaries that, because of all the benefits to them. Uh, I'm opposed to it. I think we're gambling with the tax dollars that we're gonna get a rate of return that's, that's greater than what our law lay is. Uh, maybe if we put it on the ballot, that we require that the, whoever is gonna wanna, uh, put up a dispensary, has to pay the tax dollars back that was caused for the, uh, the ballot measure. Um, the other thing that I was gonna say is that, uh, there's, because of the high taxes that California imposes on, you know, legal marijuana, there's still a, a huge illegal, uh, sales, because it's cheaper. Why pay the tax when you can buy it from somebody who's just selling it without having to pay the tax? The other thing was, everybody's saying, "Well, we need more revenue and, uh, regulate morality and all that." Why don't we include strip clubs and massage parlors on this ballot measure too, so that we can have those to get the money from? Um, other than that, I'm just saying, I, I don't agree with it. I think we should just let it go, and especially in a time when, uh, we don't have the money, we shouldn't be spending it on something that's, uh, unknown. That's all I got.
Thank you for your comments. Next, please.
Joshua Frond. Frond, I'm sorry if I said that wrong. I'm bringing you in. One moment. Hello Joshua, can you hear me? I'm sorry.
I grew up with the name, I know. It gets pronounced all the time, no worries. Um, look, I, I, um, I, first, I, I'm just gonna respond to the last commenter to say that, uh, if somebody in this community wanted to bring strip clubs to San Bruno, I personally wouldn't wanna see a strip club in San Bruno, but if it required a vote of the public, I would allow that vote. That's the point. Like, look, I don't agree with tobacco sales. I think tobacco's terrible for the community, but I'm not gonna tell you that you can't buy it. That's completely your right to do, and it is completely my right to buy marijuana. And I am asking the community to consider that I would like to buy that marijuana in the community, and I would like to pay a tax on it. I want to pay a tax on something that comes back to my community. I, I don't feel that putting a ballot measure to let the voters decide should be controversial. It just doesn't make sense. We've already talked about the city needing revenue. This is just clear revenue. And with all due respect, I hear people don't want marijuana in San Bruno. I posted something on Nextdoor. There's been a lot of discussion there. Not usually a place that I like to go, unfortunately. But, look, the truth is, is the overwhelming majority of people that I have had interactions with have been in favor. So let's let the people actually decide. Um, I, I, I just, it boggles me that, that this has to be such a controversial issue. Um, that's it. I, I appreciate your time. Thank you guys so much for considering it.
Thank you, Joshua.
Next is Stephen Seymour. I'm bringing you in right now. Hi Stephen.
Hello, hi. Um, all right, so, uh, South City, uh, already has the framework, um, uh, east of 101. Uh, and Redwood City opened up a dispensary three week, or three months ago, um, and they're doing well. Uh, Pacifica, you heard from Holly. Holly is a good community member. Um, and she, uh, has the only recreational cannabis dispensary open in Pacifica, but there are like four or five more that will come on. Um, the ballot measure, um, I, I, one thing that Holly didn't mention is, is that the dispensaries have to pay the money back to the city that it cost them to put the ballot measure on. So tonight, uh, we might have some council members who say we can't afford the ballot measure. But what Pacifica did was, is that they said, "Okay, we're gonna pass that cost on to the dispensaries." And so Holly is paying money, and so will the others, uh, that open up dispensaries in, uh, Happin Bay. They'll pay the money back until, uh, Happin, or until Pacifica's been made whole. Um, I agree with, uh, many of the other speakers that this is, uh, an issue that we should all be able to vote on. Not one council member should say that this is too important to let the public vote on it, because democracy is about listening to all of our voices. Um, one thing that Holly told me today when I went and visited her dispensary is that, uh, a good portion of her customers are coming from San Bruno. So we're giving, uh, to the dispensaries in and around our city, our tax dollars, and we need those tax dollars right now. Uh, the other thing I'd like to say is, while this may seem, uh, like, uh, not the best way to poll our people, there is a Nextdoor poll going on right now with almost 600 votes. And of those 600 votes, 65% of them would like to see a dispensary in San Bruno. Um, so I believe that this is something that you need to put in front of the voters. How will you know how the people of San Bruno really feel if you don't really ask them? And what's the best way to ask them? Through the democ, through, through the democ, through the ballot. So I'm hoping if you don't put, uh, a tax measure on, that you'll at least put a question that says, "Do you want to see a dispensary?" Or, or whatever that, uh, verbiage might mean, or might say. "Do you wanna see it in San Bruno city limits?" And you might be shocked by what you've, by what the, uh, uh, results are. Thank you very much.
And I would like to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, first Stephen, and then, um, she'll reset the clock for you.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
Um, one of the previous callers made my point, Paul. Um, right away he brings up strip clubs. And these last two weeks, as a nation, we've been talking about social injustice. I think it's a social injustice that a group of people, which I'm included in, are, are not valued enough to make a decision of what we purchase in our town. You, a lot of people have the option to go to the pharmacy. They get to go to Walgreens. But we have to leave our town, and we take, we take our tax money with it. And why? Based on previous city council meetings like last year when this was an agenda. I, I was, one of you said that, "Because we're not that kind of city. We're not those kind of people." And that no matter how much money it would bring to our town, they would not be considered. And another council member tried to draw a correlation between the death of an 18-year-old young man in our community, of a fentanyl overdose. Tried to make the correlation to cannabis use. I find that extremely insulting. I, I just think, I mean, we are so behind the ball here, you know? You have to value all the members of your community. And some of us really feel that, "Maybe you try to make us feel less than." When you've accepted that, you know, your way of taking care of yourself is like to chill out with a beer, or whatever's your choice. That's great. That's wonderful. But have that respect for the rest of us who have made other choices. At, at a time like this, I think that is very crucial. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. I have, we have three more speakers.
Yes, one moment. The next is, I'm not sure of the name. It's just showing is M Diaz. I'm going to bring you in to speak.
Hi, this is Martha. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Um, thank you for allowing me to speak. Um, I agree with Paul, um, when I say that I am opposed to it. I don't think this has been thought through. Um, no one has said anything about undesirables coming into our city on BART, nor where would this dispensary be located. I know for myself, I don't want it anywhere near my home. Having BART and a dispensary in San Bruno is not a good combination. Pacifica may not be getting undesirables coming in because they don't have BART. Our crime has gone up because of BART, and we're seeing more theft than we have ever before. And now we want a dispensary? I do agree with the, uh, benefits for those with medical conditions. Um, and I don't agree adding it to the ballot if the city's gonna be spending money on consultants to see if it should be added or not. You know, if adding it to the ballot is not gonna cost any more money, then yes, please do. Uh, otherwise, I say let other cities get the tax money and an increase in crime. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Martha. We have two more.
Next up is Nida Jamali.
Hi, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Um, thank you for letting me have the opportunity to speak. Um, I would just like to say that, uh, if this is something that we should, as the citizens of San Bruno, be able to vote on. And just to touch on what Riley Gibbons was saying earlier, like, this is not something that's gonna go away. So if, if this is something that is rejected to put on the ballot now, it will come up later. And I think, um, you know, as young people in San Bruno, we should be able to voice our opinions and vote on something like this. Um, I don't see, I don't understand why this is a huge issue. Um, like, I understand why this is causing all this discussion, but if you just allow the citizens of San Bruno to vote on this, then, uh, that would be, I, I think, the best solution. And if it votes no, it votes no, but, um, I think you just have to give it the chance to be put on the ballot. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Nida. And then, um, looks like Alfonso is our final speaker.
Yes, Alfonso, I'm bringing you in.
Hi, can you hear me?
Alfonso, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
So, you know, just to kind of go back on the undesirable, uh, statement that was made. If you think that undesirables are gonna leave their cities and come to our city to buy cannabis, then you have something kind of, that's, that's just not gonna happen, because the undesirables that you're talking about are coming from San Francisco or Oakland or wherever, where they already have cannabis sales and dispensaries. And I'm talking tons of dispensaries. I'm not talking about just one that we're, like, what we're trying to do here. Um, it, you know, everybody keeps talking about a dispensary. It doesn't have to be a dispensary that comes into the business in San Bruno. There's multiple types of cannabis businesses. There's cultivation, indoor cultivation. There's distribution. There's non-storefront deliveries. The non-storefront deliveries are what's delivering cannabis in San Bruno right now. So for every order that comes into San Bruno, all that tax money that's getting paid for all those drivers that are coming to San Bruno and delivering this product that's being ordered online or through a phone, is going to these other cities. So we're losing on all that money. And, you know, South City has just, you know, they, they have their, they have their numbers out. It doesn't look, doesn't look promising. You know, it all really depends on how much of the taxes are you guys gonna start charging these people, and how, how desirable are you gonna make it for these businesses to come here? Right? If you start charging way too much, these people are not gonna come. What type of dispensaries are you gonna put in here? Are you gonna put a mom-and-pop type of dispensary? Are you gonna make a dispensary that's gonna bring some money? So the choice is really the city council on who they're gonna allow and what rules are gonna allow to, to have this type of cannabis business here. I currently work for a financial institute that provides transparent banking, FDIC banking. This, and, and we're all talking about how it's federally legal. We provide federal, FDIC banking for cannabis businesses. I know that, I know the regulations. I know the compliance for all this. I mean, I can be a source for you guys if you guys have questions regarding this. But to bring in cannabis would be an ideal choice for San Bruno to make, to generate money. Last month alone, statewide, our businesses, and I can't tell you, I can't say the business that I work for, because they don't have, I don't have permission to talk about this. But last month, statewide, we brought in $30 million in cash alone. And that's what scares a lot of these city council members. It's like, "We're bringing a cash-intensive business. What about money laundering?" Well, when you provide transparent banking and these compliance and regulations for these types of businesses, that, that, uh, money laundering immediately goes away. And if you're worried about, you know, "How are we gonna get paid our taxes? How's this, how are these people gonna pay their taxes with all this cash when none of our banks are gonna accept it?" We've also come up with it, with a solution on, on a cash-to-tax, uh, accounts to pay cities, uh, through these accounts that they have with us. So there is a possibility of making tons of money for San Bruno. You just have to be smart about it. Is it gonna be a dispensary? Is it gonna be a, uh, manufacturing plant, indoor cultivation, or whatever? Providing a green zone is the number-one thing. Keeping everything centralized in one area, so the police department knows exactly where to go when there's a problem, if there's a problem. If you do dispensaries, of course, you're gonna have to put it out on a busy, on a busy highway, but you can control that also. So it really depends on what you guys wanna do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Alfonso. Okay, so we're back to council, and I wanna start it off, if I may, um, for, when we originally brought this topic up about cannabis in general, to have a conversation. I supported, and I don't regret that decision, to have the conversa, conversation and to talk about it, because there are different facets that can be brought in, or whether it's research, though I know there's not money there. But at the same time, that was something that was discussed some time ago, a former council, former manager, and that didn't come back. So I know we've had a lot of discussion as well, right? We've gone and talked in two different meetings. We've had input from our community. Um, I'm gonna say exactly what I said at one of the last meetings was, was no to regulatory on the ballot, and I was interested in looking at a tax measure. The reason for that was, at a sales tax for the city of San Bruno, we would get 1.5 or 1.75, I can't remember off the top of my head, and that's what we would bring in. And as other communities have done, they've brought forward a tax initiative so that you have something to tax. Because once you bring in whatever line of business, like our last speaker said, they're not paying that tax. It is a high, a high tax, uh, uh, from the state, from the sales tax, and from what other communities may tax. So the, so that is where I was, and still, still am on the same thing, and I have not missed in that statement. What we had was potential of bringing a tax initiative. As was stated by staff before, it was 5-0, 4-1, and at the end it became a 3-2. I was one of those three that would have supported it, but it will take four to place it on the ballot. And that's a fact. My comment last time, and still is, for us to spend resources, for us to spend staff time, and it sit on a shelf, because next, in less than a month, or, I'm sorry, next month, quickly, it would have to come back, and if there's not four votes, then the polling and the data will sit. And that will then be, uh, resources that we're not going to get back, because we're going to have to go back out. So for that, for me personally, with not having that, and it's been made clear to me, unless I've missed something, on the second and the fourth, we don't have that. So if we do not have that, then no. Um, I am, I am going to make a motion that at this time, so that it's abundantly clear, because the confusion came in about, there were three votes, which is correct, that says, "Staff, you continue to work. You look into something. You spend resources," which I've asked why. Staff says, "Look, if you don't have good data, if you don't know what it is or what the community desires, then you're, you're not certain." And all those initiatives, whether they be the school bonds or us, you go through that research to do, get the right product. Staff is not, um, feeling comfortable not having a product to bring to the council, because if it's something that's not done effectively and efficiently, and then it gets on a ballot and it fails, then that opportunity could be lost. The one thing I hadn't thought about until the presentation was having a TOT and a cannabis can be in, in competition with each other, and that could be a challenge. The TOT gets us the money, uh, if it were passed to 14%. A cannabis tax does not get us money into the revenue stream to the city of San Bruno. So with that.
Mayor Medina, aren't we having a discussion?
I have, I have the floor. So I'm gonna make a motion, which I can do, and then I certainly wanna hear from my colleagues, but I'm gonna place a motion on, on the floor that makes it firm, because that seemed to be the question last time. So my motion would be to, uh, at this time, not, well, I had already said no regulatory, so I'm gonna go to the tax. To not have the staff continue to do, or they haven't until this point, do any more work on.
Point of, point of order.
I'm, I'm making a motion.
But we haven't had a discussion. But we haven't had a discussion.
After the motion, there will be. That's what I'm saying. I want to hear from my colleagues, but I want it clear because that's been the question. Rico, make clear your position. So as far as the tax, staff be directed no longer to do any more work on that task or, or hire any consultants or pollsters for a tax initiative for this 2020 ballot. That is my motion.
So are we ready for discussion?
Yep. We'll see if there's a second or if it dies for lack of a second. Okay, there is no second, so then it dies due to a lack of a second. Okay, back to council.
Can my hand raise?
Oh, I'm sorry, I did, I have to hit the button. I apologize. Marty?
Marty, you were first.
He is.
Yeah, that works.
And Laura?
So I, I do want to comment, that was the, the first time in my five years that a mayor has jumped on putting a motion in before having council discussion, which is your right, correct, but I find it not necessary, but that's okay. My question's for staff. And it's regarding the cost recovery because, because it's clear council's concerned about costs. In this, in this time especially. Although I think we can all agree that in order to put any ballot measure on, we have to spend money. And especially if we're going to try to get revenue, it's an investment of this money and time. We already heard from staff that said, no problem, they can get this done. It'll be, it, it, it will be a little challenging, but that's, that's what we heard, and I'll let staff answer that again. That this, this work can get done. Now, the question that I have for staff regarding cost recovery is to provide more detail, we heard one commenter mention how cost recovery happens from the companies. But how would, how would that cost recovery work? So that's my first question, and I'd like to hear that answered first.
Through the chair, I'm happy to take a first crack at that. So normally, cost recovery is accomplished by imposing a permit fee on the, on the business. And a permit scheme would be set up generally as part of a regulatory ordinance. And so for, depending on what the, for example, the cannabis use would be, there would be a study done by an outside consultant, just as we have a user fee study, for example, to determine what, what are all the costs of permitting that type of facility? And you can include those costs in the, you know, in the cost of obtaining a permit. Of course, you don't get cost recovery unless there's a business that actually successfully comes in and applies and pays the permit. But assuming that were the case, then that's normally how, how it's done. Is through a permit mechanism that staff would, would need to set up as part of either a regulatory measure by the city council or as part of a regulatory ballot measure.
Thank you, thank you for that. The, the other, I, I have some comments, but I'd like to hear from my colleagues first.
Laura?
Thank you. So first of all, I want to thank everybody for joining in tonight's council meeting and voicing your comments and your concerns, as well as two weeks ago. I really do appreciate the time. I mean, it's 10 o'clock at night. This council started at 5:30. I started my day at 8 o'clock and I have yet to be off a computer. But I appreciate your passion, I appreciate the phone call I received from Tom Hamilton and Stephen Seymour to really explain their point of view. I appreciate the comments tonight. They are heartfelt, and I take them to my heart. There, there are a lot of differences in this world. There are differences in my own households. I have a, somebody who says, just let them put it on the ballot. And I have somebody else and a family member that says, no, we don't want this in San Bruno. So I hear you. And I know that the voters voted me in to represent the community. So that's all I've done, is try to get an opinion from the community throughout these last few weeks. In fact, I've talked about this, and I've looked into this for years because it has always been an issue. My concern two weeks ago, and my concern tonight, are the same things, they don't change. Number one, we're in a, during a COVID pandemic. We have riots emergencies happening in our city, things that take staff's time. When I can't get a response to a simple email, when I can't have my regular meetings with my city manager that I'm deserving to have and stay in touch on things that concern me or issues or questions because staff is overwhelmed and overworked, it concerns me. When the city of Belmont takes six months and 20 public meetings to offer public comment on an important item, on whether or not they should put it on the ballot, this concerns me when we want to put it into a 30-day process. So, you know, I've heard you, and I heard you say, you know what, folks? If this passes, we can figure out a way to come up with some sort of permit scheme and get that, those funds back. I appreciate that. I like the idea, thinking outside the box. I appreciate Holly who called in about what Pacifica offers. But what happens if it fails? We've taken now $80,000, whatever that number might be, out of our reserves to not actually get anything out of that. So I have some huge concerns about that. Number one is, I've heard some conflicting information in staff reports, so I'm not sure what to believe. I tried to do my own investigation on ballot measures in the cities of, in almost San Mateo County. And, and when you look at that Half Moon Bay, for example, the tax measure passed, proceeds have passed, but no, not for dispensaries, retail dispensaries. I'm not sure what's going on in South City, but somehow they came up with $100,000. So I'm actually curious to see if they don't have a storefront and they're actually still able to, to bring in $100,000. I'm actually, I'm actually interested in that. So I'm actually interested in possibly saying, if I want to make sure that, you know, Helen down the street is able to get her cannabis for personal reasons, then I want to make sure she, she's able to have that. I don't want her driving to San Francisco to get that. And I'd like her to be able to have the ability to get that in her own town. So those things concern me as well. So those are my comments so far, and I, again, I will continue to listen, and I appreciate the other council comments.
Linda?
Yes, I wanted to ask, I was thinking about revenue measures and a meeting that I attended that was not filmed on YouTube last year. And it was one of the first meetings around the Measure G, the Measure G item. And I remember there were a set of consultants that had stated that they had looked at various revenue measures prior to identifying what eventually became Measure G, and one of them was cannabis. And so my first question is, is there already work that has been done, not even a year ago, on cannabis?
Hi, Jevon Grogan, city manager. Councilmember Mason, I'll take that one. No, there was not work by a consultant that was done. The study session that you're remembering was taught, had as a part of it, a list of potential revenue ideas that the city council had talked about for at least 12 months prior. And so there were conversations around which revenue measures should the city council pursue last year if they were going to put something on the ballot. And the decision was a district sales tax measure, which is why Measure G went through the process and went on the ballot. But you are correct in remembering that cannabis was on that list of various revenue measure ideas, but there was not work that went into that. That conversation actually was the beginning of the process to decide what the consultant will work on, and the decision was the sales tax measure.
Okay, so, so as of today, then, a consultant has not been hired when this came up in 18, or 19, as an issue before the council?
No, the city council has never, has never authorized a consultant report or outside work to be done on a potential cannabis ballot measure.
Okay, and the, the hours that have been spent on this staff report by staff, were they also spent the last time that it came to council? Approximately, because that staff report was quite hefty as well? I'm just wondering how, how many times staff is going to produce information before council has a majority of a vote?
Well, the, the staff produces information based on direction from the city council. So the city council requested a staff report and, and we brought it to them, so I'm not sure I understand your question.
So would, would you estimate that the staff report that was brought to you in 18 took about as much time to pull together as the staff report that you prepared for our agenda items this year?
So I'm sorry, I, I didn't work on the staff report that went to the city council previously for strategic revenue initiatives. Maybe, maybe Keith or Jevon can answer the question.
I think what, councilmember, correct me if I'm wrong, I think what you're asking is the staff report that was conducted when the city council made a decision not to allow cannabis businesses after they were allowed by state law. Correct?
Oh, I'm sorry.
In 2018.
Thank you, I misunderstood, I apologize. So, I'm sorry, so what was the question again about that staff report?
Yeah, what was about how much time did that take compared to how much time this staff report took?
You know what, I really can't say. I have a large folder back at the office, quite a bit of time. Over the course of a couple of years, went into the city council's discussion and public deliberations regarding the amendments to the city's municipal code around the cannabis. So I, I, I just really, I don't know. All I do know, as I indicated in the staff report, is that those discussions by the city council did occur over a period of a number of years.
Okay. I just want to, I just want to point out that based on the number of calls we had tonight, I don't see this issue going away. And so as, if we don't get the three votes necessary tonight, then I just would hate to see staff spend time again on the same issue when we're probably going to have the same deficit, I'm guessing, in about a year. I also wanted to just identify that AARP, the American Association of Retired Persons, in February of this year, only a couple of months ago, released a report, I believe it was done by Division of NYU, stating that use by seniors 65 and over increased by 75% over a three-year period. In 2006, the number was, it was 0.4%. In 2015, it was 2.4%, and in 2018, it was 4.2%. There was a 180% jump among older adults with diabetes. Marijuana use increased 93% among women 65 and older, and 114% among adults with college education. I also wanted to point out that South City does not have any dispensaries. Belmont had a ballot measure just in fall of 2019. And the reason that's important is because we're hearing, you know, that these numbers are low. But the numbers are low or unknown because they're actually still incredibly new, which only means that our opportunity to have this on the ballot measure and then go through a public process if we need to is really now. I mean, the, there's a, Mark referred over and over to Pacifica doing well because it's a legacy business. Well, those are going to be legacy businesses if we let this go another couple of years. And they're going to have regular clients, and they're not going to be coming to us because they're going to have loyalty to other locations. I, I'm okay with not having a poll, and I think we talked about this a little bit in the last meeting. I also think that the comparison, I think it's a great comparison that Mayor Medina brought up to TOT tax because, you know, we're going to have a lot of competition on that too. There's hotels all over the Bay Area, right? But we're not going to say no from what I can see to a TOT tax. There is, there is going to be competition, and we're either going to get in early when we know that there's revenue. Every single thing that I've seen with a business that's been open for three or more years is making money. And I really think that, I, I hear Mr., I hear Paul, I hear Ms. Diaz, and I think they bring up very valid points. But we're the city that has an $8 million deficit. We can, we can determine where a dispensary goes, we can determine whether we want a dispensary versus some other business as we saw with other cities. But right now is really the moment that we're making this decision to get into a revenue source or not. And I think that the scary part is if we don't, we may eventually have to cut more services to our resident or cut positions to our residents because $8 million is not something that is easily going to be recovered by just development. I also wanted to ask Chief Johansson if he could talk to us a little bit about the crime element. My understanding is that he has, he may have some knowledge around cannabis. We've heard, you know, the word of undesirables and crime, and maybe he can talk a little bit about what he knows and whether he may have some information about Pacifica as well?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is Ryan Johansson, the chief of police in San Bruno. I have spoken to the Pacifica Police Department, all the way up to the chief of police about the dispensaries in their city and any potential connection to criminal activity. And the information garnered there made it abundantly clear that they've had no increase whatsoever in criminal activity that he could associate to the dispensary businesses. In fact, in, in the chief's words, there has not been a single police report taken associated with the dispensary businesses in their city. There's been some other checking done, I checked in with the San Jose Police Department because they have dispensaries, as well as the chief in Santa Cruz, because they have dispensaries, and it was similar reports, not quite as drastic as saying not a single police report, but both chiefs expressed no marked increase in criminal activity associated with the presence of the dispensaries. I hope that that answers the question you were asking.
Yeah, thank you. And I just want to reiterate that last week I read the ICMA part of the report that was not included in our staff report, but is part of the same staff, the same report that staff utilized in their report, which stated that crime overall went down when marijuana came to specific cities that were identified in the report. So I think a number of the myths have been misspelled, demystified, I guess I could say. And I just want to reiterate that we're at a turning point in the city. We've got development, we're hopefully going to get a TOT tax. But we're also $8 million in the hole, and that's just to balance the budget. That's not even to get any of our wants, right? And so if we're really serious about San Bruno going somewhere, moving forward, being better than just balancing the budget, we've got to be open to revenue sources because every other city that's been mentioned is just getting in the business. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from colleagues?
The chair?
Michael?
Just a couple of comments, since there was a speaker, Tom Hamilton spoke, made some comments. And, you know, Tom is someone I know and someone I respect in the community. And so I did want to acknowledge a couple of points he made. I just wanted to assure Tom that I do know the difference of when the council has authority and when they don't. Fully understand that certain decisions are vested in the council and other decisions are vested in the public. And I am fully aware, the point I made, and I believe it was confirmed by the city manager, that the council does have a right to move certain things forward. The council prohibited by ordinance, and the council can allow by ordinance. And that was the point I chose to make. Perhaps it wasn't clear at the time, but I did want to clarify that, that I do know the difference. And just in terms of my comment about not having a guarantee, and, you know, the point is taken that there is definitely interest, we heard from a lot of people that claim that, you know, they, they would be interested. But I just don't see somebody expressing interest on a call as being that firm of a commitment. But, I mean, anyway, that's where I was coming from. I just wanted to clarify, basically, some of the points that I made, why they were made. So I wasn't insulting anyone, I wasn't intending to insult anyone or lack their, their intention, but, you know, we, we had another organization come to us and ask for us to put something on a ballot, and they were committed enough that they would pay all the consulting fees and everything. So that shows a level of commitment that would give us some level of surety that they would follow through on that commitment, which we didn't have here, and so that was the basis of that comment. So just wanted to put that out there. I, I'm going to try to refrain from expressing too much opinion because clearly this is controversial. controversial. And, you know, tonight, we've been on a theme of unity and kinda, you know, working together, building a community. And so the last thing I wanna do, the last thing I was imagining when I signed up to be on the council was to divide the community. So I am going to be very cautious that I do not make any statements that in any way imply some sort of a bias or a negative opinion of anyone who's spoken. But I do have a few questions regarding what this process could look like going forward. So. And this, this goes back to my, my making the distinction between a council decision and a ballot decision. And I wouldn't even go down this path if, if we're not even discussing a regulatory item. So, you know, a lot of it has to do with, with the regulatory, because of course, if we start talking about a tax, and we're talking about a tax that doesn't apply to anything that's authorized currently, it sounds less, less palatable. And, and I believe staff told us that if we do go down that, I don't think, they advised us not going down that route, because people wanna know all the details of what they're voting for. And, and I still do have a concern about $100,000 when we're in deficit to hire consultants. Something I would really wanna know about what we get in the consulting report, and I know that there was some mention of some of the services they would provide, but, you know, there are a number of regulatory things that have to happen along with, with the decision. And I noticed that in one of Pacifica's staff reports, they were increasing their application fee or renewal fee from something like $400,000, $400 up to $20,000 to renew, because they weren't recouping costs on that. And so clearly, there's a lot of information that they weren't privy to going into this, and they're having to tweak it. And so, you know, one concern then would be is if the council does cede that authority to a vote of the public, then is there an ability to go back and make modifications like, like Pacifica is doing? And so, but again, I don't wanna spend a lot of time on that if regulatory's not even on the table. If we're only talking tax, then I will withdraw my question and, and we can move on.
I think it's a good question. I'd like to know the answer. Great questions.
That's staff's answer, right?
So Councilmember Salazar, as if I may, if I, as I understand the question, what you're wondering is, could a regulatory, or could a tax measure be written in such a way as to recover the, the regulatory costs? Is that what you're asking?
No, Mark, my question was really more about, you know, what we're hearing from our, from our speakers is that they want to, they want voters to decide, and it's a fair request. I fully acknowledge that that is a fair request, that if people feel that they would be better represented by a vote of the people, it's a fair request. But my question is, if this goes to a vote of the people versus we, allowing this to be a decision of the council, is there then an opportunity for the council to correct? Or, you know, once, once it's sort of released, then do we lose that ability to make the sort of corrections and adjustments that Pacifica is currently allowed to do because of the fact that their council decided?
Right, so let me make sure I understand. So I think what you're asking then is if the, if the city council were to cede its regulatory authority and put a regulatory measure on the ballot for a vote of the people, the question is, is would there be an opportunity then for the city council to reconsider some of the things that the people voted for? Is that what you're, what you're asking?
Yes, or could certain portions be held by the council and not other, other things?
Yeah.
And I'm not sure how that would even, how it would look. I know some of the things that they're adjusting in Pacifica, you know, they're reconsidering the number of dispensaries, and they're reconsidering the overlay districts, and, and of course, the tax is a variable there.
So, so, so thank you for that clarification. I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure I really understood the question, because I think there's been a fair bit of confusion. So I think the short answer to your question is yes, but it depends on what those things are. And staff would have to very carefully work with, certainly with experts who have done this before, to figure out what are those items in a ballot measure that should be left, or that we could ask the public to leave to the discretion of the city council. So for example, one of the examples we provided last time was you could have a tax on everything, whatever is, happens to be permitted in the future, that is no more than a certain percentage, but allow the city council discretion to reduce the tax. Similarly, on a regulatory measure, if it's crafted properly, you could put something in front of the voters that said, "We were asking the voters to approve no more than X number of dispensaries in particular areas of the city," for example, "with certain other requirements." And give the city council discretion to then say, "Well, if we don't want X number, we can lower that amount." So there's all kinds of possibilities for that, but, but that really does require quite a bit of, of work and study to figure out how to make sure that those things are clear. Because once, as we've discovered, once the voters vote for something, then unless it's clear that the voters gave back some of that authority to the city council, it's still retained by the voters and would require a vote of the people to change. Does that answer your question?
It does. It does, it helps. And again, you know, I wanna make sure that some of those finer points were brought up, because it's, you know, when I made my comment initially about, you know, that it may not be the best decision to put it on a ballot, there are reasons for why the council may wanna hold it. I actually, actually went back and looked at all of the ballots that had been submitted countywide, and I noticed that Half Moon Bay was the only city that actually put that question to the voters. And every other city chose to keep it with, with the council. And I imagine that having that flexibility is one reason why they may have chosen to go that route. I was, that's my speculation, but I wanted to kinda get some of that additional data from you, Mark, so thank you for that. My next question is for the, the city manager, and it, it goes to what, what happens if we are successful in passing a ballot measure that allows us to tax cannabis at some reasonable level? At that point, the city would be responsible for developing a process to look at licenses, to, to accept licenses, process licenses, do background checks. And I'm wondering, city manager, if in your previous experience, you could talk a little bit about what that process looks like, how time intensive it would be, and whether we would be able to react quickly enough to take advantage and, and, you know, because we are hearing that, that, you know, time is of the essence. And if the city wants to capitalize on this, then we would wanna move quickly. And it also, I mean, that, that question lends itself to whether we do regulator, or we postpone regulatory, do only the excise tax now, and then postpone regulatory for later, but still wanna do that as a vote? So then that has to wait for another election. From, from what I was sort of gleaning from the Pacifica documents is that it took them a good bit, possibly over a year, to develop their process and start processing applications. So just wanted to get a little bit of clarity on how you perceive the process would work and how soon you anticipate we could actually license and start generating revenue.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Salazar. I think the answer to that multi-part question is a, a series of walking us through what is, what has to be done by voters, what can be, and what can be done by council. So we've talked about it a little bit tonight, but a tax measure can only be done by the city council. I'm sorry, a tax measure can only be done by the voters, because it will be a general purpose tax measure, which is what we've been talking about. That needs to be done on an election where city council members are being elected, and so here, that is even years. And so you really have an option for a tax measure, November 20 or November 22. The next component is regulatory. There are two options there. The regulatory ordinance can be adopted by the city council, or it can be adopted by the voters. If the regulatory is adopted by the voters, that does not have to go on an even year when there are council members up. That essentially can go at any time, either any regular or special election. So that's important to note, that if you're talking about tax, it's only the voters; if you're talking about regulatory, it is, it is the voters or the city council.
And I believe we established that already. I was really asking about the process post-approval.
Fair. So post-approval, what we talked about on June 2nd was, there's really not enough time to put a regulatory measure on the ballot. And so that means that we're talking about doing a regulatory ordinance post the adoption of a tax measure. That process can take anywhere from six to 12 months. So under the scenario that a tax measure goes on this November 2020 ballot, we would need direction from the city council to also begin on developing those regulations. Would those regulations be done in time for, if the measure is approved in November to take effect in January? Potentially, but it could potentially be done a couple of months later. One of your prior statements, though, said that if a tax measure goes on the ballot, the city must adopt a regulatory ordinance. That is not true.
No, I didn't say that.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So I just wanted to make it clear that it, the city council can put a measure on the ballot to tax marijuana businesses, and there's decisions to be made about which businesses are taxed. And then there's a separate city council decision to develop the regulations that can take anywhere from six months to a year, and then there's a decision point there on whether the, the city council adopts them or that's put before the voters. Is there enough time for both the regulations and a tax to be available to the, to potential businesses in 2021? Potentially, yes. Subject to voter approval if it's put on the ballot.
Okay, so it could be within a year that we see revenue?
Well, it could be within a year that both the tax measure, if passed in November, and the regulations are promulgated and adopted by council, if you choose that path. When we would see revenue is totally dependent upon when a business steps forward and goes through the process and decides to invest and put down roots in San Bruno. I think that's a question that we cannot answer now, and there's a whole host of reasons why. One of them is, it all depends on what the regulations and what the taxes are, and that's not clear right now.
Okay. So potentially, we could go back and look at a strategic initiative for next year and say that we are going to do the entire, we're gonna vet this, we're gonna do public hearings, hopefully not under the umbrella of COVID, and come up with something regulatory and could align that with the, with the tax. Of course, yeah, everything would get pushed forward, but, I mean, really, we're not looking at having anything online within the year anyway. So we're, basically, we're already late to the game. And so, again, there, you know, I also think there's a concern in trying to rush this, looking at, I was reading about Mountain View, going through a six-month process, 20 public meetings in order to, you know, before they move forward on theirs. You know, with COVID-19, of course, we haven't had a real opportunity to, to engage the public. We're using Zoom. But again, I just wanted to put that out there as a, as an alternative solution. If, you know, looking at the timing, understanding, of course, that we don't wanna be too late to the game and other people will, you know, maybe eating our lunch by then. I think Brisbane's also ready to go on theirs. So if there really is an interest in, in supporting that industry, then, you know, I think all these things have to be considered as well. And really, you know, we're, we're not gonna be fully recovered from our staffing shortages and everything in January. And so this, we'd have to consider how, how we process all these applications and, you know, move that forward and on a timely basis as well. So, I don't know, some food for thought. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Marty?
Yes, so Councilmember Davis brought up a question about South San Francisco, and I believe that's, if I'm correct, some uncertainty from staff, and I, and I did a little research myself, they don't have a dispensary, according to the fighting department. And it sounded like Councilmember Davis was possibly open to look into distribution. But I don't know, I could ask my colleague now, is that something, Councilmember Davis, that you're open to?
Well, yeah, I mean, a number of cities are talking about delivery, and that's where the South City is making their funds are from delivery, and people are saying they want the ease of getting it. Because part of the problem, too, is, we have a dispensary, who wants it in their neighborhood?
Understood.
Another challenge, so. There's just so much to go through and try to figure out.
Right, and so, a distribution doesn't need to go to the voters without the additional tax. It's one and a half percent, and we get what we get. I just wanted to confirm that with our city manager.
Yes, if the council chooses not to have an additional tax, you can direct staff to develop regulations for any cannabis business and allow them here in the city of San Bruno.
Thank you for that. So I would, I would say that I would be interested in, for the delivery to proceed without the additional tax. I learned a couple of things today. I heard from our chief of police who confirmed that the crime really isn't there. And I did something I normally don't do too often. I actually left San Bruno and went to Pacifica today. I visited the store where Holly is, is, is working. I was, I was very impressed about the cleanliness, socially distancing, distancing going on in the store. I could say that's the first dispensary I've ever been in, and I was pleasantly assured that it isn't what people think that happened on. It was super clean, organized. There were eight workers, so this is, we haven't talked about job creation and the pursuit of people who are interested in that. They had a security guard, you have to give them the ID, so there's no way that somebody's gonna, well, forge an ID in order to go get cannabis that's more expensive than getting it on the street. Okay? And in Pacifica, they are limited, limiting the entry to 21 and over, if I remember correctly. So that's something I learned. And then I went down the street over by- Um, and then I went down the street um over by a Knicks at Rockaway Beach where the other dispensary is, and and that's a medicinal one currently. They're going through the process to uh become uh retail for anybody. And it was a different vibe. It was like going into like a holistic center. Um, and funny that their name is Seaweed Holistics, right? Kind of makes sense. Uh, I took pictures of it. I didn't send it to council. I I just figured, you know, that we got enough things going on. I didn't, I was, I'm not sure where this is gonna go, but but I really do appreciate the the conversations. And um, this isn't the silver bullet. You know, I I don't have misguided uh aspirations that this is gonna solve our financial problems. I I I understand that. I understand the importance of development and and everything else. Okay? Um, but this is based on what Pacifica's doing, you know, $300,000 that we don't have right now. And they're and and Pacifica is just starting to turn on their burners, pun intended, all right? They they got $300,000 this year and they're looking at $500,000 next year. And um, so.
Which Marty, that's exactly what they estimated. So they're right on track with what they had estimated in the in their report.
Great. Um, and and I really appreciated uh council member Salazar's, our vice mayor Salazar's um question because it answered, we we could adjust the, a lot of it. And 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 I believe what the mayor and I agreed too early is, are early in this these discussions, uh, our agreement in to let the regulatory thing happen afterwards because we don't need to spend that money now, which is another 10 to 25,000. I'm pretty sure this is gonna pass because um Pacifica's passed at 78%. And I did look at the Nextdoor poll, it's like 65%. And um, it's an investment, this money that we're 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 gonna spend to put on the ballot, just like the money that we're gonna spend to put on TOT if we go there. Um, so um, I know it's late and we have a whole other thing to get through, but this is important. And 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 um, I appreciate everybody's questions and comments. And I think we we need to find a way to get to yes here, my colleagues. Um, going forward with the distribution by itself is one one step, but we need to look at all uh all revenue streams. And and um, I I trust that staff. They they will have the best consultant that has done every cannabis uh, I believe, uh, report or fee analysis in HDL. That's that $30,000 covers everything that we've been talking about. Now, I agree with council member Mason that I don't think we need to do a poll. I think we 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 tell that to our consultant and and we choose and mirror what Pacifica did and and go for that 6% with the adjustable and and then they could do their fee analysis to figure out how we recover everything. But um, I I think um, this is eventually gonna pass. And waiting is just gonna put us a little further behind. It's not gonna solve our problems, but it's gonna, it's gonna keep $300,000 that we desperately need to hire whomever it is to make our city better. So uh, I'll I'll leave it with that for now. I gotta get a glass of water.
Laura?
Hey Marty, did you stop at Nick's Rockaway for the best uh crab sandwich in town?
I I didn't have time to that. I I buy my, I buy my sandwiches locally.
So good. Um, tha- thank you, uh, Mayor Medina. So, you know, some good discussions here tonight. Um, Michael, thank you for going down that path. Those are all part of my questions that I have. Um, you know, many cities have passed the tax measure on their ballot. Um, and you know, I think you can have the due diligence that you need with 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 uh community input on the regulatory part and, you know, make that a council vote later on down the road. Um, but I think it's important that we have the process. I think it's important that you don't just, you know, go through something that should take you six months or many months during public meetings to do something in 30 days. So um, the regulatory part bothers me. Um, and maybe you're right, Marty, on the on the polling because my my concern, as I said earlier on, is I don't wanna spend something, some money on something that we don't, we're not able to recoup the cost. We haven't vetted it out enough to determine that it's well worth my money. I don't go betting on the horses unless I know what I'm betting on and and I feel like I have a good uh return on my investment, I guess you could say. So some some questions, I guess, uh, that I have too as well. Um, so so a resident can place this item on the ballot and petition with the registered voters, right? So that that could, that could come if, should it not pass here. Um, I guess the the comment, the question I have about um dispensaries, and I don't really understand how they, how they work in terms of the advisors inside those dispensaries, right? So it's a discussion I don't wanna, I I can, I think we can spend a lot of time on, but I think before I ever vote on something, I kind of wanna know what's what's happening in those places. Or am I, when I go to Walgreens to pick up my medication, I've got a pharmacist who's educated and he's and he's um, he's giving me factual information. So I'd hope that somebody would would actually spend the time to understand what's happening. Um, I have to tell you, I've been in several dispensaries. Um, I actually try to, especially when I travel and I get outside the Bay Area, um, visit different things that 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 um I might come come across or might be interested in. And I've been in um in this state and and out of out of state as well. And you're right, they're very professional. Um, they kind of give you almost a bank feeling. Um, you know, it's, you you gotta provide your ID when you get in there. You gotta register, um, you know, security windows, whatnot. Um, very clean, very, very well organized, very well run business. So I have nothing against those.
Are you, are you done?
Uh, no, sorry, I'm just going through.
Oh, sorry.
I know Chief Johansson, you mentioned earlier regarding uh the police department's experience, but what is the experience with cash businesses? Because is it not true that a dispensary, um, can, you can only go in and pay cash? And I believe you could pay with by a debit card. Um, so there's a concern about cash businesses. Is there any concerns in in the town with crime where businesses that are just cash only?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I know she, I know uh council member Davis just asked the chief, but the Pacifica store does take AT, uh, does take credit cards.
But but debit card or credit card? Because it's again, it's a federal, it's not federally approved.
No, I believe I said credit card, but I think she's off the line, but.
Um, Chief, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Um, I think to, it's a little bit difficult to speculate um as to as to what could come in with a cash business. Uh, first of all, I would say that in my experience, they're they're not cash only businesses. Uh, but there certainly is a lot of information that they're cash heavy businesses. Um, I think that the the security that tends to surround these businesses is a big part of why we don't see a jump in crime when they come into town. Uh, they're obviously very protective of their cash. Um, they tend to stand up systems and be pretty cooperative with their local police departments, at least from the checks I had done, to ensure that the security is in place. And um, it's difficult, right, for me to say anecdotally. I'm just basing this on what other other chiefs and jurisdictions have said. They haven't had any any spike in crime like Pacifica, not a single case number associated with the business or people who are patroning the business is is fairly telling, I think.
Thank you, Chief. And um, is it true from staff that, is there any city that actually has placed um the regulatory part on the ballot and has passed?
Well, we we know that Hapun Bay did. Uh, I think they put four or five items on the ballot and including dispensaries. And I believe all of them passed except dispensaries. And I think the, in the staff report, we noted that they're they're not reporting any revenue.
Right, so that, so Hapun Bay passed for the tax measure as well as seeds that that you can grow, but it did not pass for the um retail regulatory. Okay. Thank you so much.
Then um, just oddly, because Marty, you mentioned, so I'm surprised we did, we didn't see each other today in Pacifica. Um, I also went down to Pacifica this morning and went into a dispensary. That was my first opportunity in going to one. And I was appreciative that the manager spent some time with me to um answer questions, go through the process and what have you. So very gracious, very kind, and some of your your comments uh are correct. And and I also, you know, something Laura had started off with, it is great, everybody's passion. It is great that everybody is speaking. I almost feel bad when people say, thank you for allowing me to speak. That it's, this is their venue. Um, and this is not, I would say, not going to go away. It's just about the systematic way in which we go through the process, whether it's the tax, whether it's, Marty, you mentioned deliveries. Um, again, the tax needs four. And that was my reason was if if that's a path we can't go, but you are right. Uh, Pacifica does do, in theirs, it was a 6% up to, but it gave the discretion of of the council. So you didn't have to go back if you wanted to go to a seven or eight or nine or 10. So um, those are, you know, those are uh some things. But yeah, I think this is something that um I was impressed with what I saw as well. Um, as we had gone back, it was, uh, regulatory was off, but the tax was there. Um, it does take uh more of us, but I know, uh, I just wanted to share that um I also went to Pacifica and it was a beautiful day. And no, I didn't uh get lunch there either. So I I kept it here. Um, Linda, you have your hand up. You're muted.
So tonight, unlike the last vote, I just wanna be clear, we're not, we're not directing. But this is not a vote on whether to direct staff because I'm looking at the title of the resolution and it's to appropriate funds from the general fund balance for a cannabis initiative measure. Um, I think that was some of the confusion last time was that when we were initially looking to direct staff and approve funding for consultants, which was a three vote requirement. Can we just get some very, some very clear direction there, please?
Uh, certainly, council member Mason. So we, the staff is asking for additional direction. I think it says so in the, in the title of the staff report. You don't need a resolution to provide us with direction, but we have included a resolution for the purpose of authorizing staff to expend funds. And so that that's the reason why that resolution is included in the in the packet. Staff is requesting additional direction uh regarding what to do. I think we've heard a variety of ideas tonight and uh we we still stand ready to implement the direction of the city council.
And the the vote requirement is is what?
So the the requirement to direct staff would be three affirmative votes. And I think at the, uh, several meetings uh ago, we we also had requested as a courtesy that the city council indicate to staff where there are four votes to put a tax measure on the ballot. At that time, there were not. The city council could certainly um ta- take another vote on on that tonight if they wanted to. There's been a a great deal of discussion about that. So I think staff stands ready. We we work for you and uh we wanna understand what the city council would like staff to do. I think it's fair to say that we we don't really understand that at at this moment. So we're hoping to see um additional motions made uh to see whether there's, they can garner the the three or or other votes that are required.
Okay. So um, so okay, so then um, I just wanted to make sure that I'm understanding the process, that that can, can, is there anything stopping us from putting the tax measure on the ballot and then working on the regulatory side simultaneously? Because I keep hearing, you know, council members concerned about the public process and then then the meetings, which I agree with. But is there anything stopping us from doing both?
Uh, so that's a policy question for the city council. And I think there's a couple of considerations that we did raise in the staff report. The the first consideration, and because we don't have any polling or or any testing, we don't know what voters will think of adopting a tax measure in the absence of of a regulatory measure or the idea of taxing businesses that in essence don't don't yet exist and are not yet permitted. So that's a policy question for the city council. And then the second policy question uh that that we raised in the staff report is uh what happens if there are two tax measures on on the ballot? And uh, so so that's a matter for our election consultants to to talk with us about. And I I think that we've we've heard some things that give staff pause as to whether it's a good idea to have those measures on the ballot. Because what generally tends to happen is that the voters choose one or the other of them. And and so that's something that we would need further discussions with our election consultant. I'm happy to defer to Jovan or Keith about that. Well said.
Okay. So, so no, I mean, there's nothing stopping us from doing those simultaneously, just just to be very clear.
Uh, you're you're correct, it's a policy decision for all of you.
Okay, great. And then um, the other question I had was um something that council member Davis brought up. Um, that's actually a really good point, is that an individual can petition but cannot under shelter in place, which is why we allowed the developer to jump through that process with a unanimous council approval and place their item on the ballot. And I believe if I remember correctly in that meeting, there was a discussion. I asked, I raised the question of what, how this would be treated uh with others. And so is that to say that an individual at this point could come to the council with this item uh and be treated the same way as the developer, who stated and probably has a lot more money, as Mr. Salazar stated, because they're paying for, you know, the consultant and everything else for the ballot measure, um, than an individual um to come directly to council and ask to place the measure on the ballot and not have to uh violate the shelter in place order placed right now by the state and by the county?
Sure. Uh, council member Mason, just to clarify, the property owner that came forward requested the city council to authorize staff to hire consultants and do the work and bring forward to the city council at a later date all of the necessary information so the city council can make the decision on whether to put it on the ballot. And they agreed to cover the full costs. So everything you said is correct, uh, with the exception of the city council has not made a final decision uh to put that on the ballot. Uh, the city council did ask a number of questions. Um, and the city council, um, I think in their, in the conversation, was amenable to do it in part because the property owner was paying for the entire initiative.
Okay. Okay, I have more questions about that process, but we can, we can take this offline. Um, because it sounds like that's a, that sounds like that's another, another avenue that may come back again. Um, yeah, I think, I mean, I I think that we've all set our our part. I just um, I just really think that this is, uh, given our, I know that we're in really dire constraints, but um, I really think that we need to, it's it's kind of been lingering for three years now. So I I, you know, in in those three years, you saw the list of all the cities that have approved these on tax measures or tax ballot measures, I should say. And you've seen the six months of public processes because they started this process two and three years ago uh when our city said no. So I I just think we need to make that decision now. And I have a feeling that this will be back again and staff will again be needing to prepare staff reports, spend another 50 to 150 hours um, just to bring it back again in a year or two. So I think just let the people make the decision. That's all I'd say.
Uh, Laura, you have your hand up?
Yeah, um, I I will state uh that I will support a tax measure to be put on the ballot, but that's all I would support at this time because I think that there are other options. And um, I mean, I don't, you know, I was called for being uh the cause of the $8.2 million deficit. That's not my intention. Uh, my intention always to be part of the solution. Uh, we could be spending a lot of this time um on grant writers. Uh, you know, Michael and I sat down with Jovan um earlier this year and said, I think this is important. I think we can bring a consultant on and look at writing grants and find ways to save money. I think there's many things we can do in the city to try to raise revenues. Um, and that's not always about a tax. Um, if this seems to have the community's support and there's been a lot of vocal people who want this, I think that one thing we can do is put the tax measure out there, even though, even though staff is not recommending we put a tax, a tax measure out there without the regulatory part. But I think the regulatory part could come later when we figure out a lot of the if, ands, or buts, or whats, um, get some answers. Um, but I I I I I hear people's passion.
Okay. So I will, oh, I'm sorry, Marty, I'll I'll concede to the the other Medina.
No, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, Laura, you know.
Laura, you know, a lot of things were written about you that were absolutely not fair, and I can tell you from experience. It hurts, right? And that's not what we're here for. We're here to do our best to lead our city as best as we can. I just wanted to clarify your one question. That's why I rose my hand up. I've said enough already. But I don't think staff, I didn't hear staff say that they are recommending one way or the other about the regulatory piece. If staff can clarify, please.
And Councilmember Medina, are you asking, are we recommending what about the regulatory piece?
That a ballot measure needs to have a regulatory piece or doesn't. I didn't, I'm sorry, I don't recall hearing that.
I understand the question, I think. So I think the answer is that the city council could put a tax measure on the ballot and say, for example, we are going to tax, we're allowing the people to decide to tax cannabis at a rate of no more than X percent, whatever that is. And the city council at a later date can do two things. They can either decide to have a lower tax rate, or they can decide to have different tax rates for whatever activities, commercial activities are subsequently approved. Because right now, there are no activities that are approved. So in order to make that sort of a sensical ballot measure, you would want to tell people what is the maximum tax they're approving, provide discretion for the city council to have it be less than that, and then further to provide discretion for the city council to decide what activities to allow and what tax to apply to those activities. As long as it doesn't exceed the threshold that the voters have set.
Right, okay.
Does that make sense?
That I understand. Yes, that's what I heard. And the regulatory piece will come later through a public process that will take a longer time. And I just wanted to make that clarification.
Right, the city council would later be able to determine and study what cannabis activities do you want to see in the community, and what's the right tax rate? I think right now, staff does not have sufficient direction about what cannabis activities you would either want to allow or how you want to regulate them, because we really just haven't gotten into that yet. So this would allow the city council to make that decision at a later time.
And the allowance is part of the HDL study that would tell us that framework of which businesses to allow?
At a later date, the city council could authorize staff to retain HDL to help us craft the information for all of you to make that decision at the city council.
Okay, I got that. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Chair?
Yes, Michael.
So just a couple of more things before we move to approve the direction to do this. I'm a little curious about what HDL has done for other cities and how that would differ from what they would do for us. And my point being that if there's already data that shows regionally what the pain threshold is for the tax, and it shows regionally what the earning potential is, would it vary that much between what Redwood City, what their results were, and what our results would be? And given that, given that there may be a lot of similarities, what is the minimum cost that we could do this for? I mean, do we have to go, I mean, so the 100K is out. I think everybody said, we're not going to go 100K. We're not going to do regulatory. I think we're all on the same page there. But...
I believe we are.
Yeah. So then the next thing we heard was potentially 68K or 60K or something like that. So before, you know, before we're asked to say, yeah, let's go forward and do it, I would just be interested in knowing what that number is and what the bare minimum number would look like that we're committing to.
So I can provide some information about that through the chair. City manager can certainly chime in as well. So we do have the HDL proposal, which is attached to the staff report. And I think we would want to have the option of utilizing their services to tell us that before picking a number. I think in our staff report, we said you could go from 2.5 to 10. But the problem is that cities that have imposed differential taxes on ballot measures have studied a particular regulatory activity and said, well, for cultivation, it's this tax. For, you know, dispensaries, it's that tax. For something else, it's a different tax or a different amount. And so at this point, I don't think we have sufficient direction or information to determine that. So I think HDL could help us, as well as our outside council, to come up with what should be the maximum tax that we would ask the voters to approve, even though we don't actually have any polling to suggest what that might be. That would be one of the questions that polling would test. But, you know, unless the city council authorizes us to do that in a very short period of time, we won't have that information.
I hate to sound like an incredible cheapskate here, but I'm just, you know, I'm looking for a bargain. And, you know, I think from the ballot measures I saw, there may have been only one city that actually got that granular about, you know, which industry would get taxed which way and which rate. And I believe everybody else treated it generically and provided a range. Those that provided a range, you know, it was a range between A and B. And so again, you know, if there is information that's out there, you know, I mean, is HDL, I mean, are they just going city to city selling the same report with a different name on it? Because, I mean, how much variability can there be?
You want to address that. So if I may, one of the things, I'm not quite sure I understand the question, but one of the things we did find out from HDL, as I'm having a problem with answering questions tonight, obviously. One of the things we did find out from HDL is that each location is actually quite different. And I think it's consistent with, you know, both Keith and I and Darcy were on that phone call with them. So it's not so much a regional variation, it's a variation from city to city. And they were, I think, quite clear with us that Pacifica is unique in a variety of respects, partly because they, you know, they had these legacy businesses. But they also made a point of telling us that the other cities that they did work with to put measures on the ballot, I mean, the estimates of tax revenue were really substantially higher than what's actually been realized because there's so many barriers to entry for those businesses. So those barriers are there, really no matter what the tax rate is. The tax rate is one of those barriers. But I think the way you protect yourself from that is you just put a maximum amount, because you, as the city council, you can't authorize more tax than the voters have approved. So the idea would be to put a maximum on, give yourself the discretion to lower it from that amount based on information that we have yet to develop and have not yet received.
Okay. I'm not convinced, but I'll accept your answer.
It's sort of the best information we have at the moment, given all of the circumstances.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, so I just want to clarify something because Linda was on mute. When Marty asked about the regulatory, I said, I thought we all agreed. And I'm going to correct my statement is that it was more of a 4-1. Is that fair? You can just nod, Linda. I just don't want to misrepresent because you were on mute. Because we were trying to narrow the regulatory. Marty said, I think we're all in agreement, but I wanted to make sure I didn't misrepresent. On the regulatory.
You're saying for tonight, for the...
For regulatory to be on the ballot. That's what Marty had made a comment. And I said, yes, all five of us. And I thought I saw your head nod. No, so I just wanted to clarify.
No, I'm sorry, Rick. I don't understand what you're asking.
So trying to move the process on to where there's an agreement, on the regulatory, putting it on the ballot. There was a suggestion that all five were on the page, and that's not what we're on the table now. And I just wanted to clarify, because I thought you did this, and I didn't want to misrepresent.
No, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I'm in agreement.
Okay, so we're all five there. Good. Okay, thank you. So I think we're down to, is there desire on the tax? And I think what staff would say then is we need some kind of boundary. Can you not have this tax where it encompasses all, everything? And then we go, and with the, you know, I know San Carlos did just 10% period. Pacifica did the kind of the variable scale, you know, which gives more latitude. You don't have to go back to vote every time you want a percent or done differently. So to staff, and I think what I'm hearing, obviously from the vice mayor and the heats, I think you've got concurrences here too, is we're trying to get something achieved without a lot of cost, and we're trying to be mindful of that. So maybe final question to staff from me?
Sure.
Like, what's wrong with approving just what Pacifica has offered, voted on?
So through the chair, we would need to compare the precise letter of what Pacifica had in their ballot measure. At this point, I don't know if they had any regulatory items in there. I think what we're talking about now is putting a tax measure on the ballot that would allow any cannabis businesses that would be allowed to be taxed at a maximum of 10%, but allow the city council with flexibility to lower that. In regard to the approximate $100,000 cost estimate for the entire initiative that included regulations, if we break that down, approximately $30,000 was needed for HDL. The large majority of that was to look into regulations and conduct that analysis, which would be conducted at a later date. So that is not needed. There may be some small work from HDL, but nowhere near $30,000. In addition, there was up to $25,000 for SEQA analysis and GIS analysis. Again, that was for a regulatory framework that would require the city looking at where they would allow cannabis businesses, what businesses would be allowed, and look into how that would relate to our zoning code. But because we would not be talking about regulations, that would not be necessary. Then there was another $30,000 for a likely voter poll, and that is a decision point for the city council. Do you want to conduct a likely voter poll to inform your decision on the tax measure? Or do you want to provide direction to staff to develop potential ballot language around a maximum of 10%, giving the city council flexibility? The other cost that was embedded was approximately $8,000 per mailing. The prior ballot initiatives that the city council has decided to place on the ballot have all had public education around them, not just websites, but also direct mailings to likely voters. We know that that costs roughly $8,000 per mailing, and so that's an open question for the city council. In addition, there was up to $11,000 for potential costs from the county of elections to place the measure on the ballot. And so there are still questions for the city council, and we can outline those again to really step through and walk away tonight with clarity. And the reason why you have a direction item and an appropriation item is because staff will immediately begin working on this to provide you with all the necessary information by the end of July so we can submit the required documents to the county, which I believe are due August 8.
Okay, so I'm going to summarize. The poll, $30,000, the ballot initiative, we can't substitute that. It is what the county does. And then the question is on the mailer. So the mailer and the poll, and what I've heard from you is HDL is not necessary now, and the SEQA, obviously, we know would not be necessary. Is that accurate?
I would, we can give you an estimate. I would reserve approximately $5,000 for work. As we're drafting the language, we may need assistance from them, and I would like to have that flexibility.
Okay. All right, so $5,000 for consultant, up to $30,000 poll, mailer, and that's $8,000 average apiece. The ballot initiative is what it is. So that's kind of what's before us. Any...
Mr. Mayor.
Marty, sorry.
In the event that we actually have two ballot measures, can we have one side cannabis and one side TOT? Or split in half, you know, split the cost?
Can we do a joint mailer? Yes. There is, we do have a ballot consultant, the Lou Edwards Group, working with us on a potential TOT measure. We will certainly ask them that question, and what we don't want is voter confusion. What we do know is that when you have two tax measures, voters typically choose. And we would need to be mindful of that in all of our public education efforts. We know that for the TOT measure, we have talked about a potentially a 2% increase that pre-COVID is approximately $500,000 a year. What we would see with a TOT measure, again, not knowing the final rate and not knowing when businesses would come in, is an open question. But we would certainly ask that question of our ballot consultant, because the more tax measures you have on a ballot, the more decisions that you're placing before voters, and it does affect their choices.
And one last thing is, in the event that somebody, a group out there, perhaps dispensaries in Pacifica, they wanted to send their own mailer, is there any coordination that can happen with the city? I don't think they can do that.
No.
They could do their own positive mailer if they'd like.
The moment the city council decides to put a measure on the ballot, we cannot engage in any advocacy. We can only do public education. And so it is neutral, fact-based, which is everything we have done for all of the prior measures.
Thank you. You're muted, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, thank you. We need clear direction to staff. I think we've already done it on the regulatory about a potential tax measure and then an appropriation of funds. And then we need to kind of outline that to what, where would that be if that's what the council chooses, and even on the mailings. You know, they're averaging $8,000. Marty came up with a concept, an idea. So I don't know, you know, what the council wants, but they want clear direction, and I don't blame them.
Through the chair?
Yes, Laura.
So I didn't, I guess I didn't understand that, I think the polling's not needed. So the 8K for the mailer, the 11K for the county, the 5K for HDL. I thought that those were the only costs.
You're correct. He was asking for up to five on the HDL, up to $30,000 on the polling. Mailers are averaging $8,000 apiece. How many would we want? And then the ballot measure is a ballot measure. So there's three costs that I have question marks that they want in our direction to be given to them.
So approximately $25,000?
Well, the $30,000 between HDL and, it's really $30,000. Javon, can you clarify the poll, please? It's $30,000, which seems like a lot to me.
Yeah. Unfortunately, that's what they cost. We do use a polling firm that does a statistically significant poll of likely voters using various formats, text, phone, online. And unfortunately, those do cost approximately $30,000. Again, with the mailer, it's approximately $8,000 per mailer. Typically, we have done three plus mailers. I think generally three to four mailers in public education at various times, leading up from once the item is put on the ballot, leading up to the election, cutting off roughly 15 days before the actual election date.
Through the chair?
Mike?
Are we fully budgeted for the TOT tax right now? Do we have that covered in our current budget?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Linda?
Old-fashioned way, my real... I just want to make sure. So I thought we were agreeing to save the $30,000 on the poll, because technically the poll's going to be...
Exactly.
...a ballot measure.
Yeah, that's what they want, clear direction from us to make that statement.
Okay. I understand that it would normally be done, but I think if we can get to yes... I understand that it would normally be done, but I think if we can get to yes, I'm okay with removing the the poll.
Laura concurred with you. Marty concurs. I bet you Michael would like to see that money come off the table.
And especially if we can provide a lot of the direction based on some empirical data that we have, that it's the same data we would garner from the poll. I mean, I I imagine that what we're looking for in a poll is sensitivity to that that price level. I I don't know that there that there's that much of a preference, right? People are either going to say, yeah, go ahead and tax it, or they're going to say, no, we don't want it taxed. I can't imagine why people wouldn't want it taxed. Every single, every single measure across the county has passed. So I don't think anybody's going to question that. So it's it's a pretty low risk, as far as I'm concerned.
Are we okay with the $5,000 for HDL?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Hold on, Von, you don't get a vote yet. Michael, on the 5,000 HDL?
Yeah.
Okay, so that, and then, yes, I'm sorry, Javon, go ahead.
Sure. I just want to be clear. One of the questions that we would ask in a poll is we would attempt to survey the interplay between having two tax measures on the ballot, both a TOT and a potential tax on cannabis. If we elect not to do a poll, we can ask our election consultant that question and rely on their professional advice. But if we did a poll, Councilmember Salazar was going through a number of things that we would ask, and I just wanted to point out that we would certainly ask that question because it very likely will have an impact. What impact at this point, we don't know.
And I and and then I'll go to Linda. I'm sure the consultant would probably tell you, you run a risk, right? If there's one thing versus two, just statistically. But Linda?
Well, I was going to say, can that that can that be, since there's already a consultant for the TOT, can that be part of the the poll that they're already running?
That poll has been completed for the TOT.
And is there any is there any money remaining on that contract?
There are additional task orders that have left to be filled. I think for a very nominal cost, we can ask their formal opinion. We did have some prior conversations, knowing that this topic would come up, and the response was there will certainly be an interplay. If you have someone that is likely to, in general, not support taxes, and you put two before them, they will look at the the potential implications of both of them. For example, someone deciding on a TOT over a cannabis at this current moment, not knowing where we will we will be with COVID-19, with not a lot of occupancy in hotels, someone could favor cannabis, thinking that why put an extra burden on the hotels? So there will very likely be conversations that voters have in their head when they see two tax measures. And and again, we can ask their professional opinion and get a formal opinion to the city council on that, but we did have anecdotal conversations with them this week.
Okay, and for purposes of direction tonight, though, that can be part of the budget already set aside for the TOT tax? It doesn't have to come out of tonight's conversation or a separate, I guess, funding source?
There was a question to staff.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Mason, can you repeat the question?
Yeah, I just want to make, because we're we're trying to cut away at the costs, since that's a concern. And so if the question around the two measures being on the ballot would in some way affect one or the other, I'm just wondering if that question can be posed then to the existing council of the TOT, the consultant for the TOT, and if that could come out of that budget? So then we, that's one less thing we have to worry about tonight.
Unfortunately, I don't know the exact amount of money left on that contract and the task orders. I know that that contract was geared to take us through all of the conversations and scope of work for TOT. I think adding something would be additional scope. Now, whether there is, you know, a few thousand left in there, unfortunately, I can't answer that. My recommendation would be to allocate a few thousand more in what you do tonight, just to make sure that we have the necessary resources to ask that question and to see if there's any quick polling that could be done to provide the city council with information in the next approximately month, month and a half, when both of the items will be before you, to decide what goes on the ballot. So if I had a recommendation, I would say increase the 5,000 that we were going to provide for HDL to approximately 8,000, just to provide a little additional money for for that question to be asked, so you can have the benefit of that information.
So then I would be just, if we're on the same page, I'm 8,000 for the consultant, approximately 1,000 for the mailer, and then 11,000 for the county to place the item on the ballot?
Yes, 8,000 per mailer.
Per mailer, yes, thank you.
And it's, yeah, between 7 and 11 for the ballot. Okay, so on the mailers, if we if we do go forward with this, that's another direction they're going to want to know is how many mailers? Was the last question they were asking us. Just go ahead and.
Let's say one.
We have one. Next person?
I'll second that.
Okay. Next person?
Yeah, no, there's nothing stopping outside interests, whether for or against the measure, from doing their own mailing, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'm fine with one.
Same with Laura.
Okay, we're all good on that. Okay. So so here's, here's the, and maybe we should make a motion that we're abundantly clear, and I'll start it again, so that Rico's abundantly clear. Or unless we all have consensus, your choice, but that we would move forward on a ballot, I'm sorry, on a tax measure regarding cannabis, that there is one mailer, there is the obvious cost for the ballot, which is between 11, 7 and 11, and that there was then the HDL, which we had said five managers asking for eight. So with the eight.
35,000 total.
Okay, 35,000 total on what what was just said. So that's what I've heard from our
Can we check the math? Can you check the math on the beginning, please?
Javon, check your math.
11,000 for
Keith, have Keith check.
11,000 for a consultant?
No, 8,000.
I'm doing it on Excel, and I had another 8,000. It's 27,000. 11,000 for
Thank you.
Marty, just say the 3,000.
8,000.
I always try, man.
Okay, so so for a total of 27,000, and we've heard how it's distributed as far as that, so that would be the direction and or motion, however the words you want to use.
Second.
27,000 is coming out of
An appropriate, we'll have to do a resolution for that. And it would be coming out of the general fund balance. Correct, Javon?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so Marty, you had a thumbs up.
Yes, sir.
Linda?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Rico? Yes. Okay, well, first, I want to say thank you, and I know it was rocky. I know there was some, you know, me being more resolved to it, so maybe I was too resolved in the beginning. What I love is as we started this meeting so far, it has been positive, it's been uniting, and it's bringing together, and we we walk out with a 5-0 on this. Javon, we're going to need to do a resolution.
Yes, if you don't mind, thank you.
So this would be for 27,000.
Mayor Medina, I'm sorry, I didn't know if we were, did we take, were we going to do the tax also?
That's what we were just doing. Everybody said thumbs up and to tax. No to regulatory, that was already decided. Yes to tax, that was already decided unanimous on both. Yes up to 27,000, which will do a resolution for the appropriations. Can I have a action on the resolution? Counsel? This one I do need a motion and second under vote.
Motion to approve the money, the funding for the ballot measure. Can we say up to 30,000 to give a little bit of leeway?
Yeah.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, colleagues. Does anybody need a break, or we want to go right into Keith?
It's the the tax measure was unanimous, and the spending of the up to $30,000 was unanimous, correct?
You're correct on both. Unless anybody corrects me now, we'll consider this done. Thank you for your patience. And yes, all of us have gotten attacked, and just that my text was going off attacking me for various things, and that's why I'm not even looking at the phone. No, again, I'll say it again, nobody deserves when it gets personal or or somewhat underlying threats. And so if you experience those, I'm sorry. And Marty, you're absolutely correct. Things I I read about Laura specifically, and I'm not embarrassed to say that I have friends on this council. I'm not ashamed at all, and the things that were said are totally unjustified and not accurate. And until you know somebody, one one should not chastise and and lash out, in my opinion.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. Mayor, if I may, just in an abundance of caution, because we're we're having a side discussion here. It it is the city council's direction that staff is not to spend any additional time working on a regulatory measure for the November 2020 ballot. Is that correct?
Mr. City Attorney, you have 5-0.
Okay.
Oh, the city staff is not to spend time on regulatory. You are correct.
Okay.
And obviously, nobody agreeing with me on the council.
All right. Thank you very much. Just wanted to be sure we're clear about that.
I think it's better to be safe than sorry.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks.
Does anybody need a break, or can we go right into the study session?
Through the chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, both. Michael?
It's 11:30. It's going to take a couple hours to get through this, so perhaps we should come back unanimously.
Unanimously, yeah. Let me ask, because I know we have, council has Wednesday and Thursday. Keith and staff, I know it puts you puts you under a tight range, so do you want to just do your presentation, or is it kind of pointless? Because we're not going to remember it next time.
So
Advice?
Yeah, the there are a number of very significant departments and funds that will be presented. There, I think the PowerPoint is over 55 slides of information we are going to convey to you. We have a meeting on Thursday that begins at 2:00 PM, and the schedule currently goes through 5:30 PM, and that is to talk about the capital improvement project budget. We could amend this section to that presentation and go into the evening on Tuesday, still beginning at 2:00 PM. Alternatively, we could schedule another city council meeting for next week. We do not have a city council meeting scheduled for next week, which I believe is the third week of the month. And so we could have a special meeting on Tuesday, the 16th, to cover these sections. That is up to council, your desire.
So I I don't want to speak for Michael, the Vice Mayor, but he has, correct me, Michael, but you have a meeting on Thursday night, CCG, I believe, and so that can't, we can't continue that unless we don't want to be representative of CCG on Thursday. So may I ask, may I suggest to council, since we have at least three to four hours tomorrow in interviews? The thing is, though, we were going to do voting. Can we move that then to Tuesday, Tuesday, the 16th, where we bring this budget and the voting for Measure G Committee? What is your thought?
Mr. Mayor, if I will?
Yeah.
The interviews for Measure G Committee are tomorrow.
That's correct.
And then that was going, the appointment was going to be on the 11th, which is Thursday, and we were planning to have a Measure G Committee Committee meeting next week. And so I would hesitate unless you guys are moving the interviews to have the appointment of the Measure G Committee on the 16th. Is that what I heard you say?
Okay, so I would say, no, we're not moving tent. People are lined up and council and applicants. So are you are you saying, I know you wanted it next week, so you're saying that's a challenge if we have a a decision on Thursday, it gives you no time to get the team together, the new team?
No, I think keeping with the schedule and having the Measure G appointments occur on Thursday is appropriate. What I thought I heard you say is have the Measure G appointments on Tuesday, the 16th, which
That's where I was at.
Yeah, I would say that that would be not preferred. If council, if council so desires that, we can do it.
Let's ask council. Is council okay with still meeting on the 16th in a condensed version, meeting later in, like, if it's three instead of two, to just do the Measure G Committee? Or, because I think I I could see what staff's saying, they'd like to meet with them the following week, and that may may cut it very close for those that have to make arrangements.
Through the chair?
Yeah.
I I noticed we have four hours scheduled on the 11th, and I don't know that it's going to take us four hours to point, can't we do the appointments and continue this meeting and on within those four hours on Thursday?
So we can certainly do the appointment of the Measure G Committee meeting on Thursday, the 11th. Also, on Thursday, the 11th, we had a robust capital improvement project presentation at the request of council to talk about how we fund streets and the various treatments. We can truncate that and attempt to accomplish everything we were going to do today and capital on Thursday, absolutely. Beginning at 2 o'clock, we will go as as fast as you want us to go through the information and truncate the presentation.
So make Thursday emerged. Is it full? Speed reading? Yes?
Yes. Good.
I think that's fine. That's what we've had, it's budget season, we've had a lot of meetings.
Okay, so Javon, we will continue. Well, council has tomorrow for interviews, the 11th. We will continue and try to condense what we can between on the budget and then try to and then make appointments. And maybe we should start with appointments first, so we get that out of the way.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Staff, Javon, you're good? I see everybody looks like we're okay with that. Okay. And I'm sorry, Keith, that, but thank you for staying with us all evening.